First on the agenda is to, oh, just got the recording note. First on the agenda is the approval of agenda and minutes. Is there any discussion on them? They are both posted online in the, the shared folder. The agenda is essentially vote on the draft ordinance review and vote on the report, the draft of which I had provided, and then discussing the next business. Any discussion or motion regarding minutes or agenda?
A motion approval of the agenda and minutes.
Is there a second?
Second. I've got it.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve the agenda and minutes. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Next on the agenda is the vote on the draft wind ordinance. Before we do, I have one change that I would like to note. New information with regard to the DBG levels. And this is from a, a paper that was, let's see here. So Stephen Ambrose, the acoustician that has been kind of behind the scenes on some of this stuff, was one of the publishers of this paper. It was a paper titled Wind Turbine Acoustic Investigation Infrasound and Low Frequency Noise. It was published in the peer reviewed Bulletin of Science Technology in Society. In it, it described, let me read this for you real quick. So, let's find it. Bear with me a second. I need to find a definition here. So, the outer air health, air cells in your ear is OHC. And this says that the approximate threshold for physiological response by OHCs to infrasound is 60 dBG. Previously, in the draft, we had 85 dBG. Based on the recommendation that was proposed, that was in the Gibbons County discussion for their ordinance, which was the only one that I could find at the time that addressed DBG. So I would propose that we change our threshold for sound at the property lines for the adjacent landowner and on the property line for the turbine hosting landowner to 60 dBG in line with that, that paper. Any discussion on that? Oh, okay.
If that has much impact, you know what kind of impact that would have on turbines? Is that feasible or not feasible, or?
Well, I, I'm, I don't know for certain. I believe that it is feasible. The key to these thresholds are that they are established and then the, the turbine companies would then be required to model their citing considerations, blade choices, et cetera, et cetera, to these thresholds. And this paper was specifically addressing wind turbine noise, so. And, you know, if, if Invenergy had participated in the process, you know, they would have given us feedback on these other thresholds to let us know how feasible they were. But, you know, this, this states that the 60 dBG is the point at which the physiological impacts start to occur as a result of those little fine hairs in our ears, which I guess are what's picking up that low frequency stuff.
Sounds good.
I have no problem moving it there. I just want to make sure we're not kind of back.
Yep, yep, no, exactly, yep. Okay. Okay.
Jeff, on page 15. On page 15, I thought we decided to strike out the two mile thing for the next turbine. Page 15 at the top, it's basing in project.
Did that not get struck? Oh, good catch. Yep.
That was the only thing I thought.
Okay. And you saw the changes that I'd made to sub paragraph I regarding the safety training?
Yep.
So instead of the county emergency management coordinator, it's the leadership of the individual agencies? Okay.
I have a, I have one more question on it too. In the application, in the application section, bottom of 21, letter D, you got project details, including name of project, anticipated number types, generating capacity, tower height, throttle diameter, turbines, blah, blah, blah. I, I guess I didn't see in here, there's a couple of different sections that it could be, because we discussed that they can't change some of these statistics after they've made their application. Meaning they can't all of a sudden do like they did here in phase two and the towers are a third bigger than what they told us, or?
Right. That, that's in, that's in section four, subsection four.
Okay.
It's titled modifications after approval. And that's on page 26.
Yeah, I remember the 300 foot and all that, but.
Yeah, so in the, in the applic, in the application, it talks about the, the final plan submission on page 24.
Yep.
So their permit is based on that final plan submission.
Right. Okay, I must have skipped over that.
And then the, the modifications after approval in section four would apply.
That was all I had. On this.
Okay. Well, I, and you caught the bottom of page 21, the removal of subsection or sub subsection echo that talked about the identification of significant migratory patterns and nesting areas for birds. Jim Hansen said that he thought that the DNR review would cover that satisfactorily. So I, he said, just strike that statement altogether would be fine.
I'd like to bring up just a comment that was made by the public that Jimmy's a conservationist and not an actual, for our purposes, I don't think it matters, but not an actual DNR. And it was mentioned that for, for the future, we do actually have a DNR officer in town now. Maybe he should be included with Jimmy, just food for thought for the future. I don't see the difference, but must be.
Right. Okay, and I didn't think of this until just before the call, but with the changes that we've made, I need to go through administratively and just make certain that all of the section references are still appropriate, you know, because we've added or deleted. I've tried to make adjustments to section references along the way, but I do just want to do one more scrub before I give it to the, before I give it to the board supervisors to make certain that any section references is actually referencing the correct section.
Maybe the county attorney too, Jeff.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have a copy of it as well. Yep.
I assume when you present, I assume when you present this to the supervisors, they're all going to get a copy of this Worth County zoning paper. Are you going to read that to them, or are they supposed to read it when you make your present?
What do you mean, the Worth County zoning?
The zoning commission report and recommendations.
Yes, I'm going to read that. I'm going to read that.
While they follow along, yeah. I think that's very integral.
Yeah, my, my experience has been if, if you want to speak to, you know, to an audience or a small group, you don't give them the handouts before you talk because they'll spend all their time flipping through, looking at shit, not listening to you.
Yep.
And so it's, it's a better practice that if you're going to give them something, say what you're going to say first, then give it to them.
So you'll be actually reading this to them before you?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, I think that's very integral, so.
Yep, I'll, I'll read the report to them. The rationale document that I sent separate, I don't intend to read the rationale document to them. I was just going to give that to them, which is why it was a separate document. I had intended when I sent you guys the draft report, I had pasted the text of that in at the end of it. But evidently I didn't click save before I uploaded it, so you only got the, the report by itself. So hopefully you had a chance to look at that rationale document as, as well.
Will you be reading that to them also?
I won't read the rationale document. I'll hand it to them. I do, I do want to talk to you guys about, you know, after we presented this stuff to the board of supervisors, you know, I thought it may be appropriate to just do a letter to the editor for the rationale document so that, you know, people have an opportunity. It, it's, it'll be available since it's provided to the supervisors. It's public record, so people could get a copy of it. But I think just to make it simple and easy for everybody and, and help get that word out there a little bit more. Just, you know, I could write a letter to the editor that includes that rationale, just to help communicate.
It clears up a lot of questions and streamlines things. I think it's a great idea.
And I also have asked to be added to the agenda after the zoning commission. I just want to speak as an individual about some, some things related to this stuff. But back to the ordinance. Any other discussion on the ordinance? Or a motion to approve as we've amended this evening with the change from 85 dBG to eight to 60 dBG and the removal of that, the oversight on the two mile requirement? We can't go anywhere.
I move to approve the, the amended wind ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think Dana raised her hand and then Justin and Todd each piped in at the same time, so.
We don't need a vote, it's unanimous.
Matt, you can, Matt, you can kind of take your choice which one seconded.
Sure, make me make this.
So the, I, I saw Dana raise her hand before Justin and, and Todd.
Dennis.
Yeah.
Always.
All right, so motion on the table to approve the amended draft. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a unanimous vote to approve the draft as amended. Next, we need to, well, I would like to, to have you guys approve. I guess you need to approve the report since it's a report from the commission, not just from me. So any discussion on the report and associated rationale that the report references?
I thought it was well written.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I move to approve. I'll second it.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So motion on the table to approve the report and associated rationale, the report to the supervisors with our recommendations. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. It was unanimous approval for the report and associated rationale. So I will deliver the report, the ordinance, and the rationale to the supervisors on Monday morning. I should be on the agenda already. I sent Jackie and AJ a note yesterday asking to be added to the agenda. I've not seen the agenda yet, but I presume that, that I'm on there for that. Next on the agenda is discussion of next business and schedule. Certainly you guys deserve a break. I, I really appreciate the fact that you guys have been willing to jump in on this stuff every week. You know, the, the reading ahead of time, all the time spent on the Wednesday nights and, and in particular, jumping on again tonight to get through this stuff so that we can get the stuff to the supervisors. We do know, particularly as a result of this, that the, the county development plan is old. It was approved in 2006. It talks about how land should be used in the county. It talks about considerations for industrial and commercial development and such. But again, that was quite a number of years ago. There is a clause that I found in that plan when I was interim zoning administrator that says that the zoning commission is supposed to review that plan on an annual basis to determine if there are changes that are necessary. I would ask you guys to take a look at that development plan. It's on the county website. And I'd like to find out from you guys when we want to get together again someday. Not next week, but someday in the not too distant future. And just talk about your review of the plan and, and what you think we need to do, if anything, with regard to the plan.
The plan kind of says we can't have windmills.
Well, it doesn't say that. It, it, it's actually somewhat silent with regard to renewable energy. It just talks about commercial development and industrial development.
Quality of life, folks thought a lot of stuff that we are actually in the middle of right now. My personal thought is I would like to wait a couple of weeks to see how this looked out first. You know, I don't think we're done here. We're, I'm sure the supervisors will be, I don't know if they'll be calling us or if we need to help or the public. I think we got a couple of weeks to finish what we're in the middle of right now before we think about taking the next project on. The timeframe of that, I have no idea. You know, we're talking probably two, three weeks before they get finished, right?
Yes, yep.
I don't think that's an excessive break. But.
No, I don't either. You want to get together in August sometime, early August? That should give plenty of time to get through, you know, the, the next few weeks, provide a, a break for everybody and time for everybody to take a look at that development plan.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, Jeff, with about a month break here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think I, my vote would be early August and unless this whole, you know, if the supervisors are having issues with the current wind ordinance, you know, and that needs to get reviewed, maybe we need to push it back, but right now shoot early August.
Yeah. How about the first Wednesday in August would be August 4th? How does that work on people's calendars?
I'm probably good without, I don't have my phone in front of me, so.
Okay. Well, let's pencil that in then. August 4th and the, the agenda will be a discussion of the review that people would have completed on the county comprehensive development plan.
Same time?
Yeah. Yeah, I think this has been working fine. I think everybody's been able to accommodate this schedule. Does anybody have a challenge with continuing this kind of a time? I mean, not a, a weekly thing, but seven o'clock on Wednesday?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I, I also just, I, I want to call attention to the, the fact that in the report to the supervisors, I, I do tell them that if they believe that there may be some changes necessary to the draft, I've asked that they reach out to the commission to discuss that just because there are so many of these things that, that work together. So if that does occur, of course, I'll need to reach out to everybody and, and find some time on everyone's schedule to, to get together and do that.
I don't know how relevant this is, but I'd just like to share so everybody knows. The Doppler radar report, there's already rumors going around. You remember the Doppler radar report that we had at the 16th meeting? There's already rumors going around that that doesn't pertain to small counties like Worth County. It only pertains to large metropolises. The, the radar, that, that report was irrelevant for Worth County. It only pertains to larger cities, which to me sounds like a bunch of malarkey and a smokescreen. The guy that wrote the report said that that was false. For whatever it's worth, worth just sharing information that people have been talking to me about.
Yeah, they're, they're actually, Mark Tomlinson sent a note to the National Oceanographic, blah, blah, the NOAA, N-O-A-A, I forget what that stands for, that run the radar. And he said that the lowest scan, the point five degree of our radar, excuse me, ranges from 10,000 feet in the south of Worth County to 13,000 feet in the far north. So we won't see any impact on our radar, on our radar slices from turbine development in your area. Thanks for checking with us.
Because all the, okay.
Well, just because of the, the sweep of the radar, it's, you know, it's sweeping, you know, different ranges of elevation and the lowest range of elevation because of its distance from Worth County. You know, with any, any angle, the farther you go with that angle, the farther away it gets from ground. And he's saying in the southern part of the county, that sweep is 10,000 feet above the ground. In the northern part of the county, it's up to 13,000 feet. So so long as turbines stay below 10,000 feet in the southern part of the county and 13,000 feet in the northern part of the county, it should not impact their radar, is what he was saying.
At least for our 600 feet, I mean, well above.
Where does the cities come into play on that, just because of the taller buildings and the changes in thermal, or? Did he just say about that?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's, it's multiple factors, but it's, it's predominantly based on the geographic location of the radar, the fact that the radar waves are taking off at an angle. So the closer you are, the lower that radar signal is. The farther away you are, the higher that radar signal is. And oftentimes, these radar systems are in proximity to the cities, which is why you get that clutter from the cities.
Okay.
So, any other discussion or next, the business for the next meeting? Is there, if not, a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Guys want to keep going? Dana's going to motion to, going to move to adjourn. Is there a second?
I will second it.
All right. Motion to adjourn is on the table. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. The meeting is adjourned again. Thank you guys very much for all the, all the time on this. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Have a good weekend.
Yeah, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Thanks. Thanks.